Welcome to the August 26th, I almost said April 26th. August 26th, 2021 Village Board Meeting for the Village of Woodbury. Please join us in the in rising to the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence for the 28 police officers, month to date alone, that have died in the line of duty.
United States of America, in sweet republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a full board tonight. We have Trustee Graziano down on the end, Trustee Gomez next to him, Trustee Eric, then Trustee Jacamaza to my left, and we have Deputy Clerk Jessica McLennan on my right, and I'm Tim Egan, I'm the mayor. So before we get started with the regular meeting, and this is one of the reasons why there's so many people here, we're gonna take a few minutes to recognize some members of the community that have served the village for many years, in some cases, close to 20 years. This is the first opportunity we've had to do that since the pandemic ended, well, didn't really end, of course, but since we went back to regular meetings, and we want to take the opportunity to do that now. So first, we'll do them one at a time. First person we're gonna recog-- I'm sorry? Oh, I thought I heard something. First person we're gonna recognize is Robert Anzalone. So by the Village of Woodbury Board of Trustees, and appreciation for your years of dedicated service, we thank you for serving the Village of Woodbury Planning Board. And Robert served from April 2012 to August 2021. So thank you, Robert. Come on up and get your plaque. (applause) Come on up, Joe. So again, by the Village of Woodbury Board of Trustees, and appreciation of your years of dedicated service, we thank you for serving the Village of Woodbury Zoning Board of Appeals from June 2016 to May 2021.
We should just stay up.
What's that? Next up is Vic Forelli.
Hey!
Hey! So, by the Village of Woodbury Board of Trustees, and appreciation for your years of dedicated service, we thank you for serving on the Village of Woodbury Zoning Board of Appeals from 2010 through 2017. Come on up, Vic. (applause)
Gary?
Gary? But, but a village of-- so Gary's one of those people that served quite a while in a lot of different capacities. So by the Village of Woodbury Board of Trustees, and appreciation for your years of dedicated service, we thank you for serving on the following for the planning board, January 1998 to December 2002, May 2014 to May 2016, and then on the zoning board of appeals from July 96 through December of 96, and then June 17 through May of 2020. I'm telling you, just keep coming up. Thank you. (applause) You're gonna have to hand the phone off to somebody else, Maria, because you're next. So presented to Maria Hunter by the Village of Woodbury Board of Trustees, and appreciation for your years of dedicated service, as well as your many contributions to our community, we thank you for serving on the Woodbury Planning Board from February 1st, 2001, all the way through December 31st, 2019. Long run, thank you very much for your service. And we have one more, one more very special one. So Dorothy Morris, Dottie Morris, has served our community in so many ways in her lifetime. She's been a member of the education community in the area for over 30 years. She was a kindergarten teacher and first grade teacher as a learning disability and reading specialist, a former principal, and the driving force in the creation of the children's programs at the library. Dottie is a former president of the Lions Club. She continues to serve on the Woodbury Public Library Board of Trustees. She also served as past president of the Woodbury Historical Society, the Woodbury Gatehouse Community Chairwoman, a former chairperson of the Business and Industrial Commission, a past director of the Woodbury Senior Center, a member of the Centennial Streeting Committee, and the Land Preservation Committee, and a Meals on Wheels volunteer. I'm exhausted just reading this. Dottie is also an avid writer who shares many interesting articles and facts about Woodbury on the Gatehouse Facebook page, including chapters in the memoirs from a Woodbury resident. So, Dottie, you're a local treasure. We all love you. Thank you very much, and we're gonna give Dottie the key to the Village of Woodbury. Oh, good.
And I've done anything and everything that I've wanted to do. And I just would wanna say, I've had 90 years of it, and I hope that there will always be a Woodbury.
Thank you, Dottie. Thank you so much. We love you. Congratulations again to all of our honorees. Okay, so we'll move on to the regular part of the meeting. Violations hearing pursuant-- violation hearings pursuant to Property Maintenance Law Section 240-9C. There are no hearings scheduled this evening, and I'm gonna remove this from the agenda, from future agendas, unless there are violations that we need to hold hearings on, so we don't have to go through this every time. So public comment on agenda items. So let's move on to the first row. Anybody in the first row? Anybody in the second row? Anybody in the third row? Mrs. Hunter's coming up to the mic.
Right on cue.
Right on cue. First of all, thank you to the village board for the acknowledgement with the plaque for understanding what all of us volunteers go through, and almost 20 years of service for the planning board, so I know what volunteerism is, so thank you. On your agenda, old business discussion about the pulver fill permit, just want to confirm that the property, I was looking at the tax maps, I'm pretty familiar where the properties are. On one of the pages of the EAF, page three of three, it's checked off, will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from point or non-point sources? If yes, three yeses are checked off, and it says drainage towards an existing drainage channel will be affected. If I'm correct in my reading the map, that drainage channel comes down towards Brigadoon Boulevard, goes under the road, goes to my neighbor, and then comes across my driveway, which empties across 32. There's Tributary 6, Tributary 6A, and they're all trout spawning brooks. I'm very concerned about any additional water that will come down there. After all these years since Brigadoon's been built out, the original builder and the HOA, they made great, they took great pains to make sure that we wouldn't get flooded out. Water that used to come down through there was murky, would flood out the road, and I don't want to see this happen again. The property can't take all this excess water. So please, when you do your deliberations on this, just make sure that you really look into the EAF with the water discharge. Thank you.
Thanks, Maria. Anybody else in the back row? Back of the room? Come on up, Matt.
I'd like to say I've spoke to this issue before, before you. I've brought up a lot of things that I found that were not suitable. I don't understand this whole thing with this pulver fill operation. Like I said, I think it was at the 12th meeting, that I don't see the benefit for anybody else from this project. All I see is more traffic, more dust, more dirt, more debris on the roadway leading up and back to the site. It's not safe. Ice House Road isn't, wouldn't be safe at all for having trucks, especially oversized dumpsters, which could happen, as it has in the past. As you've, you know, you've passed a law to allow fill to come in from outside of the village, and we saw what happened last time with that. It wasn't, it wasn't very good, and that's why I strongly oppose it, because it wouldn't, it wouldn't seem to have any end in sight to the dumping, is what I, what I saw last time. It was, you know, trucks lined up, one after another, dump load, dump load after another, waiting in line to dump. And as I said to you before about this short environmental assessment form, it doesn't show that there'll be a traffic increase of any substantially, you know, substantially, I don't believe that, not for a second. And I don't think it's consistent with the natural landscape, but the form says it does. And, you know, you should weigh the benefits versus the risk on this whole project. I've asked you to go up there and look at the site. I don't know if anybody, any of you did that. I mean, it would, it would've been nice if you told a neighbor that lives next door to where this dump site is gonna be put, that he should come to this meeting, it would've, it might've helped, because he's gonna have a silt fence along the side of his house. Other than that, you know, there's rattlesnakes there. I mean, they're, they're all over the place. I think you should shoot this down. It doesn't make any sense. Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Anybody else on any agenda items this evening? Okay, we'll move on to regular business, administrative business. Looking for a motion to accept proceed of the minutes of the meeting held August 12th, 2021.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Tara. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
How about aye? Approval of abstract, looking for a motion to approve abstract number six containing vouchers 21-0414 through 21-0481, totaling $155,930.52.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Thank you, Chris, for the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
How about aye? We have one extra item under administrative business. Looking for a motion to accept a proposed agreement with Woodbury Villas and Woodbury Homeowners Association regarding the future repair of project infrastructure. As discussed, the village wants the ability, but not the obligation, to make a contractor repair to a road within a WP3 subdivision that gets damaged by the construction of a new home.
I'll make that motion.
Do you, Andrew?
I'll second.
Trustee Gomez with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
How about aye? Okay, next up is another extra item. We're working on a revitalization grant from New York State. We tasked the revitalization committee, almost as soon as they were formed, to come up with the recommendations on a project we should undertake. Recommendations were sent from the revitalization committee asking us to approve the following. The revitalization committee is recommending to the board the following be included in the economic development grant state municipal facilities capital program that we're seeking funds from. First, the purchase and installation of hardware and banners to be attached to Route 32 utility poles. This would include 13 lampposts, 10 of which would be placed on the sides, on both sides of Smith-Bow road, from approximately Route 32 to Peroni Circle, and three teardrop posts to be placed by the train tracks, all with LED streetlights. The estimated cost for that one is $30,550. Next are 13 two-way scroll arm lamp brackets for each lamppost, holding two planters on each. Estimated cost, $1,040. Installation of electricity, $5,000 per pole, estimated cost of $65,000. 20 planters, two per pole, but not including the three added teardrop posts by the train tracks, estimated cost $800. And banners to place on utility poles along Route 32, estimated cost $4,000, for a total estimated cost for the grant of $101,390. So I'm looking for a motion to accept the recommendations of the revitalization committee and submit them as the final project.
I'll make that.
Thank you, Tara. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Andrew. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
How about aye? I just wanna thank the revitalization committee and the beautification committee for all of their hard work on this. This was a daunting project to toss at them as soon as the revitalization committee was formed, and they did some really good work on this, so thank you. So now, old business, discussion on the pulver fill permit request. So I'd like to afford the opportunity for the applicant to explain the project to the board, but before we do that, I wanna make a couple of things clear after discussing with council. The secret still needs to be completed for this application, but the following should be considered. This application will require a freshwater wetlands permit from the planning board. This application will require a water quality overlay district review by the planning board, and this application will need a review by the Environmental Conservation Board, which is the planning board. So for these reasons, I think it's appropriate for the applicant to apply to the planning board for these actions, and for the planning board to seek lead agency status and perform the secret. We, however, as the village board, should and can and should hire an independent inspector for the fill permit, and a dependent forester for the tree harvesting component of this application, under Chapters 149 and 286 of the village code. These costs would be covered by the escrow account from the applicant. So before we go to the applicant, Kelly, did I miss anything? You have anything to add? No? Okay, good. So, oh, there you are, Justin. Would you like to come up on behalf of the applicant?
Thank you. Justin Kemble, here from Leavittson, Reddick and Kemble, here on behalf of the applicant on this fill permit. To adjust, explain the thought process behind Mr. Pulver's efforts to have this fill brought into the property. It is to ultimately make the property something that is more usable for him in the future, and to make the slope less extreme over the course of the whole property. The comments that have been raised by the community are well taken. The community does need to understand that the ultimate goal of this will be to have it remain an impervious surface with natural vegetation, and to not impact on the water runoff. There will be a short impact on it, which will actually be addressed by the planning board when we do the freshwater wetlands permit. There will be some requirements upon us to ensure that there is not additional impact, and ultimately, there will be a, no gains or losses. There won't be any increased water flow, there won't be anything that will impact people that are neighboring properties. As far as the truck, just area distribution or disruption by any traffic, the fact of the matter is, is that that will be a short duration. This is not a ongoing project. This is a short-term effort with little impact upon the neighboring area. And taking the rattlesnake or other endangered species into account, again, this will be a project that will return the site to its natural format, so that there will be natural vegetation in the area, there will be, the habitat for those animals will be sustained. Now, in the future, there may be other efforts to utilize that property, but again, they would not be anything that would not be already allowed. So if there is an impact, that will be addressed at the time that an application is made. The client is trying here to make a property that has some limitations on it usable for himself in the future. He doesn't have any specific plans at this time. It is going to be something that he hopes to be able to use for himself or his family. It is not going to be connected to any other projects. The board may be aware that there was an application for a winery to be placed in the Rushmore Estates. That application is actually going to be withdrawn, and that's not gonna move forward. This is, has, and never has had any direct linkage to that application. Are there any other questions that you have?
I don't have any at this time.
Are we allowed to ask questions?
Yeah, we, so, okay, so then why don't we, why don't we start then at the end, then? Trustee Graziano, you have questions?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. One, for the, can I, I can ask our own people stuff, too, right? The last report I've seen from the building department or our internal engineers was a year ago. Have we relooked at this project since a year ago, when that, when that report came That's the first thing, yeah, why you look at, because the reason I'm asking that question is because in the initial report that we were looking at for this project, it said you were gonna, the trees that were gonna be cut down were all 7.3 acres, and now this one says 3.6 acres. That's a huge revision of the project without a second memo, and I wanna make sure it's not, it is 3.6 acres, because anything, if it hits five acres, it's a type one, and we're totally a different project.
So, just to address that, there have been some meetings between our engineer and the town, as well as responses to the comments of the previous memo that you're referring to, and which has resulted in a, an adjustment that our engineer can speak to.
Good evening. My name's Larry Toro, it's civil tech engineering. Just to clarify that issue there, there was an original submission, and it was quite significant. Grading plan was looked at. Since that time, we had a site meeting with some board members, and the plan was pulled back considerably, back to what is, what was submitted now, and it is the reduction down to 3.9 acres, I believe it was. So, and along with that, because one of the issues was about the larger trees, trying to save those, as well as some of the rock walls, and that's what was accommodated for in the latest plan.
The last report that I have from H2M is from September of 2020.
Yeah, it's about a year ago, correct?
Right. I can refer this to them again.
Yeah, yeah, so I would like to definitely see another, if this is a revised plan, I'd like to see a revised report from our consultants and our building department as well, looking, relooking at the revised plan, because it did, they just don't mix for what they're trying to do now, which is gonna lead to confusion. Another point I have is, you know, Ms. Hunter brought it up originally, but, you know, any time you change the grading this significantly on half of a piece of property, it's going to change the drainage, no matter what you do. What are, where, what are the, what's being put in place to make sure that this change in elevation, that the drainage is not gonna wind up flooding someone?
Well, what'll happen is because of the amount of disturbance right now, it'll trigger the development of a SWIP, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, and along with that, we need to demonstrate there is zero net increase runoff from the site. So I anticipate, even though we are putting back vegetation and no impervious, there will be an increase that will be dealt with, with the stormwater pond of some type.
All right, and the last thing, you know, I agree with Mr. Higgins' also comment, and I leave this up to Rob as well. I mean, bringing trucks in to dump that much fill up those narrow roads, I don't know which pathway you're gonna take in there. I don't know if Brigadoon will allow trucks through Brigadoon to come down and dump, or, but the other, Ice House Road the other way is very narrow as well. It's just a very narrow, very hard area to tread, traverse with trucks that size, so I'm kinda really a little worried about that as well.
Well, I know it's still Ice House was the proposal, and I believe, and we could show it on a plan, there were improvements in order to accommodate those trucks for Ice House.
So just to be clear, you're gonna improve Ice House Road in order to accommodate those trucks?
Correct.
Is that what you're saying?
The applicant is going to work with the board and the planning board to ensure the least amount of impact upon his neighbors. It's not his intention to cause any problems, or traffic problems, or issues on Ice House Road. He has a goal to fill in the space, but at the same time, doing it in a way that is as least impactful as possible. So if there needs to be improvements, we'll have to address those and take those into consideration as we're doing the plan. All right.
Okay, Trustee Gomez?
On this, the last time we were supposed to, and I, of course, misplaced them, but I have a question. You said, do you have any approximate time of how long you're planning for this to all go through?
We don't right now. As you, as your colleague pointed out, there has been a great reduction in the amount of fill that we are going to be using, the acreage that's going to be disturbed. So we're going through this process before we actually have the exact numbers on how many truckloads that's gonna take, but that will be part of the process to determine an approximate impact that that will have. We'll have to do that when we're looking at how it's gonna impact Ice House Road, as well as just considering how we're going to be utilizing the independent inspector that's going to be looking at what we do. So you're gonna have an additional oversight over us with that independent inspector, and that will impact how we move forward.
What was the expected time that you had for this project?
That's difficult to say right now.
Well, I find it hard to believe, because, I mean, you're filling in and not giving a reason why you're filling in, when it could impact a lot more of the neighbors, and what is the benefit that Woodbury's getting for every resident, not just him? I understand, you know, that it's his property, he should be able to develop it, but if it impacts more people, then it's benefiting, so why should, and there's still not a reason why spend all this money, and then, or maybe 10 years or 20 years down the line, then I'll decide to use it, or sell it, or do whatever, develop it.
Well, right now, he has an opportunity to bring in some fill, and he has plans to, well, he has general ideas that he would like to have the property--
So you can't narrow a timeline for a general, whatever I plan to use?
Are you asking about how long it's gonna be for the trucks to bring--
From the trucks, so then what the ultimate goal is to finish it? Because you can bring the fill in, and then just let it sit there, or half fill, and then decide, well, like, he's not gonna do the winery now, I'm not gonna finish filling it and leave it halfway?
Yeah.
Do you have a time for filling, and then a time of when--
We don't have a time for how, what we're going to be doing with the ultimate property with it, because there isn't a specific goal. And the fill, again, it's gonna be, we're gonna have to look at how long, how much of that, how many trucks are gonna be needed, and how quickly they could bring in that fill.
Okay.
So it's gonna be, but that will be part of the process, again, with your independent inspector, that we're gonna have to deal with.
And still no actual plans, per se, so you don't know exactly--
For the usage of the property? Like if we're gonna put a house there or something else?
Right, exactly.
Nothing quite yet, no.
Okay. I had a lot more, but I didn't have my paper set. You have it.
Trustee Eric.
Thank you. Hello.
Hello.
Kelly, I have a question for you. Being in light of what Tim just said, this is not it, right? In terms of environmental assessment, there's going to be a full-blown environmental impact statement done at some point?
Not necessary.
Well--
Because this is not enough, in my opinion. Yours doesn't work either, I'm sorry.
It was, but, oh, there we go. There will be an environmental review process done. Whether the planning board has an entire environmental impact statement, I don't know. That would be prepared if they found, if they issued a positive declaration, but they would have to go through the Part Two for the project, and then evaluate those impacts. But there will be a full environmental review performed, the, there is required, a hard look is required to be taken under the law at the environmental impacts of the project.
Okay. So that's in the planning board's hands, but it's-- So, that's in the planning board's hands, but we have no control over?
Right now, I think the plan was for, because they need so much from the planning board in terms of permits and referrals as the ECC as well.
Right.
That they handle the lead agency on it, so they're going to make an application to the board. That board would declare its intent and it would...
Okay, because a lot of my questions concern the water overlay protection, the wetlands, the protected, you know, the endangered species. I know you mentioned that you're going to try to maintain habitats, but if you're cutting down even five acres worth of trees, that's where bats live. So, unless you're replacing trees with trees, I don't know how you would maintain their habitat. That's one comment. Will there be a tree survey done?
There's going to be, what it sounds like is that you're going to require a, by independent forester to watch what activity the applicant's doing on the property.
Well, I would like to, I think that what the tree survey will do is mark the trees that you're going to be removing so that we can get a better sense of the magnitude of the clear cutting of the land. And you did mention in your memo that this is not related to timber harvesting, so you're not harvesting any of the timber that you're cutting down?
No.
Okay.
Kelly, you want to weigh in on the timber harvesting?
Yes, so there's a few. There's, there's your batteries dying.
My batteries are dying. So, there's a few different ways that the definitions are in your code. Thank you. Now, I have two. There's, there's commercial timber harvesting, and then there's non-commercial operations, and then there's really non-commercial timber harvesting. And the way timber harvesting is defined, I think this actually does constitute timber harvesting. If he's not selling them, then it's not commercial timber harvesting, but it would still be non-commercial timber harvesting, which is why you would have a forester there. Sorry. Which is why you would have a forester there. The non-commercial operations, that's really more of the selective cutting where there's a sapling there that is, you cut it down so that other trees can blossom. So, there's different ways that your code looks at it in that Chapter 246. But we would say that under this, that would constitute timber harvesting, but commercial or non-commercial, that's, the applicant can make that determination if they're going to sell it.
Okay. So, I know, I think I recall this being true. I didn't live in Woodbury when Brigadoon was being built, but because of the rattlesnake population, that is very populous in that area, there were some concessions that Brigadoon, the developers, had to make to ensure that certain areas were kept open, like open space, and they didn't touch it. I think that's when you first drive in. I could be wrong, Vic, you could probably correct me here. Will, is that going to be considered here? Like, I know it's such a close, in such close proximity to Brigadoon. Who's going to be the oversight for that process and what concessions will be made? I know Mr. Pulver has plans for the property, but who?
You mean oversight for the timber rattlesnakes?
Yeah, like, who's going to watch and make sure that?
So, when the planning board declares its intent to be lead agency, the DEC is going to have to be notified. They're going to have to be notified because of the rattlesnakes, the northern long-eared bat, and actually, the natural community of the chestnut oak something. And the DEC would weigh in as to the timber rattlesnakes, and if they think that there, you know, needs to be special provisions, I have seen it go through a very long process to protect the rattlesnakes. But they could come back and say, like they do with some of the bats, that it's a tree clearing, cutting window, but it really depends on what the DEC is recommending.
Okay, so there would be somebody, DEC, somebody watching, okay?
Yeah.
Not that I think he's got ill intentions, but you just don't, I mean, I'm not an environmentalist, you know, I mean...
We understand, and that's obviously something that my client is going to have to pay attention to and is concerned with.
Okay.
What his goal for this is not to make it so that this is not a natural space. He has kind of artistic ideas about making it a, more of a beautified forest, one that is attractive, has less undergrowth. He does want to plant trees, he does want to pay attention to native species for, for the plant life on the property. He has expressed to me the desire to remove as many invasive species off the property and to return it to, I don't want to say natural state, because he wants it to be one that he finds attractive and useful, but at the same time, does want to ensure that as much natural space as possible can be preserved.
Okay, thank you. My next two comments are about what Mrs. Hunter was concerned with, with water runoff with neighboring properties. I remember when this was first introduced to us, Mrs. Hunter spoke out about that, so I think it is very important, and I know you're the engineer, so you're, this is your purview. You're changing the entire landscape of the property, and I'm, I'm concerned that, because it's not a natural, what you're doing is not the natural landscape, it, there's going to be an impact in that I don't even know could be mitigated. I don't know that any of you could know what would happen when all of that's cut, all of that's leveled, and because there's such, when we were up there, I mean, it's very sloopy, very, it's terrain, it's like off-roading. I just don't know how you can ensure that it's not going to impact the neighbors, just because of the va, it's, it's a huge piece of property. And we went through it, and you had it all roped off for us, but I'm, I'm just very concerned because I know this is problematic historically without disturbing anything that's natural.
Right. I mean, the flow of the runoff as it is now will continue as it is. I mean, the same direction, we're not altering where it goes and whatnot. What we will do is provide provisions so it's not an increase impacting the adjoining properties at the rate the runoff goes off. I mean, it's now, as you said, a steep slope, and if you look at the grading, as the grading plan, you're still going to have that slope. It'll be a little steeper so that when it comes up, it can level out and have more of ultimately talked about for, he's got his kids, he's got lots, potentially, you know, a better building lot for residential dwelling.
So, is there a study that can be done before all of this is done, showing what, what the water?
Well, a study, and that would come under what's called the SWIP, the Storm Water Pollution Prevention Plan.
Okay, I'm sorry, I don't know that, the technical term, so.
No, that's, that's the acronym, but that's what it's for.
Got it. Okay. What about a stormwater protection plan?
That, that falls all under that.
Same thing.
And along with that is sort of Rose's set of a control plan and all those items that protect the adjoining properties.
Okay. Okay, I think that's, oh, oh, and then the other question I had, I think it was Mr. Higgins who brought us up the last meeting, when there were fill truck, well, dump trucks coming to another property, not Mr. Pulver's. Who's, who's responsible for the oversight of the fill that is coming in? Are we to dedicate a building inspector to just this one project to inspect the dump trucks?
Go ahead, Kelly.
So, actually, that is part of what the mayor was talking about earlier, under the filling chapter, which is Chapter 149, the village has the ability to hire an independent inspector to monitor that fill, watch chain of custody, things like that, but that is to be paid for by Mr. Pulver. So, he'll have an escrow with the village for payment of that inspector.
Oh, so that's what the inspector would be for, okay.
Yes, to make sure it's the clean fill.
Like, Mike would have to find time for one of his guys to do it, okay.
Right.
Okay. And my other comment is that, this is based on what Mr. Kimball was saying, that there's not going to be, you know, it's a short-term project once the fill is, is, it's done. The concern is that he fills it in, and then he wants to develop more, and then more houses. That's more construction, that's more, so I don't know what his plans are, I don't think he knows at this point, other than beautifying the forest, but that's a consideration that we have to consider, is if he were to subdivide the lot and apply for that, and if it's even possible, putting more houses there, that's more disruption.
Right. Well, I mean, as far as the initial permit and what's under the plan, it'll be a plan that's monitored by the building department, independent inspectors, whatever, and he has to comply with that plan. There's no way that I could see, and it's enforcement issue, that he could just start running trucks in and filling wherever he pleases. I think it's, it's going to be fairly controlled to that area, and if he decides or feels that he wants to do another area, it requires going through this whole process again.
Okay. Thank you.
There's also, based on the zoning as well as the access to that site, there's really limited things that could be done with that piece of property. So, the likelihood of him being able to, in the future, subdivide it off of a private road and do multiple buildings on it, especially on a filled-in lot, is going to be very difficult. So, I, I don't foresee that ever being his plan. The cost associated with that would be exceptional, as well as just probably the limitations that the town allows anyway.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay. Trusty Jacque Gomez?
Actually, I think it was, pretty much everything was covered by the other trustees. The only question I have is, how much involvement have you had with the HOA at Brigadoon so far? Are they aware of anything about this project? Have you, it, it will probably greatly affect them.
Well, we haven't been involved at all with the HOA at this point because the HOA's has no authority over this particular project or really any direct relationship to it. We're going to go through Ice House Road, which would be, not go through the Brigadoon development, and would have no impact then on the Brigadoon HOA. We're not going to be using any of the Brigadoon roads, nor is this property actually directly adjacent to any of the HOA property. It would be, it's, actually, I don't even know that, I believe there's a buffer between this property and any of the houses. There's an open spaces lot that develops, which, which probably part of the original Brigadoon deal to protect some of the, the local wildlife, the timber rattlers, that runs significantly on this property and may, and certainly creates a buffer between this property and most of the Brigadoon. I do think there's one or two lots that back up to this property, but they're going to be on the side that's actually not being filled. So, there would be very little impact on any of the homeowners or the HOA.
Now, I know in the past with some of the pull for applications, there's been a conversation about improvements to Ice House Road. Have any of those even started improvements to Ice House Road at all?
So, the biggest applicant that would have had impact upon Ice House Road was the, the winery. And unfortunately, the winery, based off of some issues with the requirements of the state statute for farm wineries and the town ordinance, don't really allow my client to get, as the ordinance is currently articulated, won't allow him to get a winery license, a farm winery license. So, at this point, he's going to not move forward with that application. Because of the timeframe in which it would take for him to get that winery license, we would have to ask the board to make some changes, which is something that's been, been looked into. And then also with the current moratorium on building, my client doesn't see it as something that's feasible to move forward with, with him at this point. So, that's why, that's the, the application, that would have had some changes because it would have increased traffic on Ice House Road, and that just doesn't look like that's going to be able to, to move forward.
I know we've talked, I know Trusty Gomez asked this, and I know it's come up, but what is the vision for this property, for this area, this land? What is exactly is he looking to?
At this point, what he's really looking to do, I guess, could be best described as creating a natural park for himself and his family. It will be land that is, again, paying attention to native species and wildlife, but in a manner that is beautified, I would say. But also paying attention to the fact that he might, in the future, want to build a house on the property, which he would be allowed to do in its current state, but this would make it more attractive for him to do so.
So, it's pretty open-ended right now, correct?
At this point, it's pretty open-ended, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, do any other board members have any further questions?
No.
Go ahead, Chris.
I just got one more. I think the, 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 the people forgot to ask this question. I should be whipped, but where's the fill coming from? And who's going to be responsible to test it? Quite a lot of our...
The inspector. The inspector.
Independent inspector.
That will be overseen by your independent inspector. Will test the fill, make sure that the fill is clean and coming from a reputable source.
Do we have any standards for fill?
Well, usually, the independent inspector reviews what's provided for the fill, usually gets sent, you know, to a lab about that. But there are standards that he has to comply with, there are levels in the NYCRR relating to certain contaminant levels that can be present in soils. There's also things in your code regarding like C and D, things like that, so whoever you have as the independent inspector will be looking at that, but will also be looking at things like the chain, I call it the chain of custody, or manifest, saying it came from here, it was tested, these, this many cubic yards, they show up with that many cubic yards, kind of like evidence, that sort of thing. So, that's what the independent inspector will be looking for, but it will have to be tested so that it's clean fill.
And that will be at the expense of the applicant.
Right.
Although, we're not going to be the ones who hire them. You pick them, we pay for them.
Yeah, no problem. Do any department heads, Rob, you have anything you want to add or ask?
I've got it.
I can see you behind me. Mickey, anything? Kelly, any final thoughts?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
Justin, anything to, final add?
Nothing else. Thank you for your time.
All right, thanks very much. I just, I just want to note that we did receive an email from resident Matt Higgins stating his against the pull of fill operation, stating details as to why in that email. So, that's it, thank you, Justin.
All right, thank you very much. You all have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
Okay, good discussion. So, next up is an extra item under old business, just an update. I want to update everybody on the annexation request. So, as I stated at the last meeting, the public hearing will not be held on August 31st. The town of Palm Tree and village of KJ are still reviewing the application, it just won't be ready by next week. Process is being worked on by our consultants, and as we get more information, we'll pass it along. Okay? So, new business, looking for a motion to authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Orange County for the, for the contract of snow and ice removal on certain county roads for the 2021, 2022 season at a rate of $4,950 per mile.
I'll make the motion.
Have a second. Thank you, Chris and Jesus. The motions, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay, that concludes regular business, so we'll go out to public comment. Anybody in the first row? Lori?
Just wanted to circle back on the sewer meters and the sewer plant. I know that it's very near and dear to your hearts. So, after our last meeting, I circled back with Eric Denenga and James Burpee, respectively, the commissioner of Public Works and also the, our general services commissioner. They had indicated last time that the bid would go out, so I wanted to make sure the bid was going out in August. Apparently, there's been some issues, they're going to send the bid out at the, the reviewing the documents for the permanent meters, and it should be sent out by the first, end of September, first week of October. The draft documents are expected from our consultant by mid-September with revisions made and final documents completed by the end of September. I also questioned them on the temporary meters they had indicated that they were using, and they said they are currently using portable meters to evaluate the interceptor capacity with a requisition in for five new meters expected to be received by the end of the year. These meters are predominantly used to assess interceptors as part of the facility plan for the sewer improvements that Delaware engineers working on. Now, I circled back with them again, and I haven't heard back on this, these are a few pertinent questions that were brought to my attention. I wanted to verify that the meters that they're sending the bid out for are for the new, larger pipe that's being installed, and not for, you know, some of the smaller areas, because I think it would behoove us to monitor the biggest pipe coming into the plant as opposed to the smaller ones. So, I asked them if it's going to be the meters for that size, and then I know that we've previously discussed capacity at the sewer plant, but with the recent development boom in Palm Tree, I've asked them to review the capacity to make sure that we have enough capacity at that sewer plant for our existing users, and what are we doing to protect the capacity to our existing users? And if we don't have enough capacity to fulfill all of those buildings, then how would they be able to issue a certificate of occupancy if there's no sewer? I'm still waiting to hear back on those very, yeah. So, I, as soon as I hear back from them on that, I will definitely send it to, to your mayor and have him disseminate it to all of you, and I just wanted to circle back with you and keep you as up to date as I am on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
You're welcome.
Anyone else in the first row? Anyone in the second row? Anybody in the third row? Mrs. Hunter?
Lori, I know, she may, you're one of three of our legislators, if I may ask her a question.
Technically, no, but...
I know. On 105, when you're going towards Bigger Town Road with the new development that's going in on the, opposite the Trooper Barracks, they're digging under the road. They're putting, I presume there's going to be a light there, we don't have control over it, Monroe doesn't have a control of it. With what's going on with the construction, and this is for the board as well, it's becoming a hazard. a hazard. I almost saw a bus pull out in front of me and almost hit a pickup truck today, because they were coming off of Bigger Town and making the left-hand turn. This is, this is a concern, so maybe the legislators can find out why the county is allowing this to happen, and maybe the neighboring towns and villages are not being aware of it. But that's something that's, I don't know if anyone's been down that way recently, but it's horrendous. I suggest, I can't even suggest going on the other side with Larkin Drive, because either way, we're boxed in right now. I want to thank the board for all of your concerns with the Pulver interest. Once it's referred to the planning board, I'm sure I'll be there as well. But as Mr. Higgins stated before, when we had all those trucks coming with the soil for the property that was further down on, past our house, it was a total disaster. The dirt, the trucks that were coming in, and there was no really, what's the, you know, policing of that area. And if we're going to be using Ice House Road, most of you know what that, it's basically a dirt road, and Mr. Pulver does own it. If those dump trucks are going to be coming in and out, there was a traffic study done for the winery a couple of years ago. The zoning board did approve that with the, with the traffic flow, but now we're talking about dump trucks. To go in and out of the road onto 32 and then going into Ice House Road, we're, we're looking for trouble. So I really thank the board for your hard questions that you asked, and once it goes to the, if it goes to the planning board, I'm sure we'll get some more answers, but I do thank the board for that.
Thank you, Lori. Anybody else in the third row? Anyone in the back? Matt? Okay. All right, so then we'll move on.
Second.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
So we'll go on to board member comment, I just have a couple of brief comments. Just want to once again congratulate our honorees this evening. Thank you again for your many, many years of service to the community, Woodbury truly appreciates it. Just a very brief update on water, the new well project is continuing to move along. The waters administrator myself and, and several consultants met virtually earlier in the week just to get an update and to move that project forward. The one thing I did want to say is that the hydrogeologists' water study should be back to us by the middle of September, so we'll have that very soon, in a couple of weeks. So that's good news. And that was it, that's all I had this evening. So let's go down to trustee Jacque, excuse me, trustee, Chris.
One of the chiefs that are.
That guy over there.
Good evening, everybody, thanks for coming, and I also want to congratulate all the honorees and thank you all, all your service you've given to Woodbury. Service is service, and everybody deserves to be recognized for it, so thank you on the bottom of my heart. Something that is near and dear to my heart, and, you know, is the kids and the children and the next generation growing up, and something that Andrew and I both got going through and gone through, hopefully next week or so, is I drove my son up to college and dropped him off for the first time as a college freshman, and thinking to myself, you know, I went through the houses and, you know, being an older child, he was kind of our whole entire life, and as he took in and as he got out, and as we set up his dorm, and dorming, something that, you know, watching what went on, it was a very hectic day up in college because of the storm that was coming in, it was that weekend where you had the storm. And they were supposed to have, you know, a scheduled dorm move-in, Saturday was only coming freshmen, and Sunday was supposed to be for the upperclassmen. All the upperclassmen showed up because Sunday was the storm. So basically, you had 10,000 people trying to get out of this campus all at once, which caused a line of three, four, five hours getting to campus, committing to move. We got lucky, we got in there for one hour early, but what I noticed, and what was a really good example for these children was, no matter how frustrated people got, people worked together, came together as a community and as people coming from other communities. And people were getting out of cars in the middle of the highway, walking across the highway, like a car dealer, as if they were opening up their restaurants for people because they were waiting outside. They were, the food people were giving out bottled water from the restaurants on the sides of the fast food restaurants on the side of the road. When you got into the college, they did everything they could by running out with bins and had all kinds of volunteer upperclassmen there to help you carry everything and get everything from the car, helping build it. It was just an amazing display of working together and showing what we can do if we put aside everything else. It's, it may not be what we wanted, it may not have been the most ideal circumstances, but it worked. And the reason it worked is because nobody got heated, nobody screamed, nobody yelled, nobody got angry, and nobody took that, you know, that anger that's in the world nowadays was put aside, and everybody worked together for a common good. We can just take a little piece of that back, and all our own lives, and put that into practice, everything would be such a much better place. So that's my kind of message tonight is, follow the children, follow the kids, they're the leaders of the future, they know what we need to do. Let's put aside our anger and follow their example, and let's give them the best example we can with them. So thank you, and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chris. Trustee Gomez?
Good evening, all. Thank you to all the nominees, they give your blood, sweat, and tears, forgive the wood burning. Sometimes you feel like it's not appreciated, you forget, but we have it, and we thank you all from the bottom of our hearts. I too prepared tomorrow to take my daughter after I came back from vacation. I got stuck in Florida because of the storm for another four days. Of course, my kids loved it, but I had to pay for it, so I was, but we all had a great time, you know, lemonade, I love it, that's what you get. And like you said, you know, it was frustrating in the airport, people screaming and yelling and, because a lot of flights were getting canceled because they wouldn't be able to land. And I try to remember that, and it was peaceful and calm, because my son had to come back, the other six of us had to stay, but he had to come back because he had to work on Monday. And he found a flight, oh, because he was trying to get frustrated until calm down, asked nicely, and sure enough, they found him in a flight, so he was back. And I went to rent the car, and all of them got, and all this, and I went up from $600, the guy worked out because he understood what happened, to have that. So when you're kind, patient, and you show others that your intention is to, hopefully you get that back. And if you don't, don't let that sway you, because sometimes it does seem, and I go, damn it, you give so much and no one cares, I appreciate it. But you know what? People do take out the time to say thank you, and to say keep up the good work, or say, I agree with you and I'm glad you're there and all that, and those little things mean a lot to some people. And just a casual smile, and a hey, sometimes is all they need. So be kind, stay healthy, stay safe in this heat, and have a great night, good night.
Thank you, Jesus. Trustee Burek?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for attending, and I want to thank again, as like everybody else, all of the honorees tonight. I've had the pleasure of working with some of you on some of the boards you serve on currently, and I will tell you, most of us, less senior people in Woodbury, look up to you all and for everything you've done, and you've left some very big shoes to fill. And I really do hope that our generation is able to do even half of what you've done, and I think we'll be okay as a community. I truly, when you look at who really loves and cares for Woodbury, you just look at who serves on these committees, and it shows. So thank you very much for everything that you do and for the example that you set for all of us. Today is a day that we celebrate and honor our most loyal friends and companions, today to reflect on how much joy these companions bring into our daily lives, and a day to show them how much of a part of our family that they are. It's National Dog Day, and for those of you who know me, know that I love dogs maybe more than I like people, I apologize, but that's true. I usually, I use this day as an opportunity to speak to those I know about and educate those that know about the importance of adopting or fostering animals that are in our shelters. It's the most rewarding experience you will ever have, if you're able to, please consider it. I can tell you from personal experience as someone who's had a rescue dog my entire life since I'm 11 years old, there is nothing in the world more rewarding than looking into the eyes of your rescue and seeing nothing but love and gratitude. As the saying goes, there is no greater earthly privilege than to have been loved by a dog. I encourage anyone who's looking for a furry friend to consider adoption. I just saw on the Woodbury Animal Shelter's page that there is a dog, unfortunately, that found her way back to the shelter, who's looking for a home, who looks like a very, I mean, maybe my husband will go for another one, I don't know. But, sorry, Chris, if you're watching, but you might not be able to change the horrific events of the dog's past, but you would be able to rewrite its future if you opened up your home to it. So just take today to maybe reflect on that a bit, and thank you, everyone, for attending and for listening. And also, I just want to say a short, keep everybody to keep our servicemen and women overseas in your prayers for everything that's been going on, it's absolutely horrific. And I thank them all personally for their sacrifice and their service for them and their families, so thank you all very much.
Thank you, Tara. Trustee Jacque Gomez?
Well, I've come here tonight to debunk two myths, and I'll start by saying, one, as somebody who served on the zoning board of Woodbury, there is no great plan by serving on the zoning and planning boards. Debunking rumor, myth number two, there is no preferred party either when you serve on the zoning or planning boards. It is, it is quite honestly the greatest need in Woodbury, is finding those people that are willing to volunteer for one of those two boards, and it is not easy to find. So every year, we go through the same, they borrow and feed to get volunteers for each of these boards. So for those tonight, Vic Corelli, Marina Hunter, Gary Castenbaum, Robert Anzalino, and Joe D'Antinello, some of them I've served with, I thank you for probably the life gives the greatest piece of volunteerism that Woodbury has ever done. So thank you. Two, as somebody who ran for office, the greatest pleasure or the greatest pain is actually knocking on doors. The greatest pleasure is also knocking on doors, because you get an opportunity to meet your neighbors, meet people who are not normally, and one of those people I had the opportunity to meet and has truly blessed me was Don Morris. I am so happy that tonight I've been able to honor a woman who has done more than I can ever imagine for the community, she's probably forgotten more than I can ever know about the community. She's a true treasure in Woodbury, and I've been trying desperately to get her to adopt me as her own. I failed miserably in that fact, I don't know what that's gonna be in the town anymore, but Don, I can't thank you enough for everything you've done for Woodbury and will continue to do for Woodbury moving forward, so thank you. We had a major letter event last weekend, and thankfully, we had a very good team here in the village event, who despite the turnout, the way they were depicting with the winds and everything else like that, but it was a rain event. And we are truly blessed here to have excellent department heads, good crews around them, and the tools that they need to provide for our residents. So to our department heads, I want to thank you for everything you did over the weekend. I know it wasn't easy, and we were a lot of eyes, worked a lot of hours to get through that, so thank you. And then finally, just as you know, I had surgery on my groin length, I want to thank everybody who's reached out to me, offered assistance. It's, it's nice to know that we have people to help when needed. I especially want to thank my bride, who has put up with every little bit of me during this, this entire, so far, and we're only a few years, so we have a long history of that I can think of, she has been, I just put it second, so, and you Shannon, Shannon Watson, and that's all I have. Shannon, Shannon?
Okay, thanks, Andrew. Department heads? So we'll go out to department heads. Mickey, let's start with you, you have anything?
Nope.
Mike?
I don't.
Kelly?
You know, just to thank Rob for the microphone. You've got to get that in, never going to live it down.
Okay, so then with no further business to discuss, look for a motion for German. Okay, thank you, trustee Gomez, trustee Burek with the second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye, what I, we will be going into attorney-client session, so thank you, everybody, good night.